In the Thursday, November 11th, 2020 School Committee Meeting, start with the roll call of attendance. Josephah Doughty.
I'm still here.
Carol Lewis.
I'm here.
Mayor Parkin.
Here.
Charlie Downey-Hugh is out sick and Tony Maugn is here. Great, so why don't I recognize the live broadcast and online stream available through Westwood Media Center? And also, we are online at www.westwood.k12.ma.us.live. It will be providing real time public access to the activities of the school committee in accordance with the March 12th, 2020 Executive Order of Governor Baker. Let me almost comment for those of you who are watching that there is the forum where you can submit questions. It's been posted and is live. Public participation won't be till later in the meeting, but if you have questions or comments you'd like to submit, go ahead and do that now ahead of the public participation. And that's also on the website link as well. Okay, so why don't I start and hand it over to the superintendent for her report.
Great, thank you. Good evening. So I am going to be discussing the COVID-19 impacts during the superintendent's report, but there are a couple of other things that I just wanted to quickly address tonight. So we had several parents and alums reach out to us over the last week, I think in light of the events in our country right now that have us all focused on issues of systemic racism and privilege. And they've had some questions for us about how we're working on some of these issues in the district. And I think it's fair to say that some of them have encouraged us to work with greater urgency in our efforts to be an anti-racist district by examining our curriculum and our school culture and our hiring practices. So you know, I just wanted to reflect tonight that I think that clearly, if you look at our country's history over the last, you know, 400 years before we even were a country, starting with the Europeans settlers, treatment of Native Americans, slavery, to lynchings, to our history with Jim Crow, you know, it is a history that is replete with racial injustice and racism. And I think that simply isn't a matter of debate or interpretation. And so I do want to be clear that I believe that public schools are obligated to teach our students an accurate rendition of history that includes, you know, all of the voices. And that discussions of race and racism have to be a part of a student's education or else nothing will change. And that, you know, I believe is one of the powerful potentials of education. And that's one of the reasons that we have been talking about it and thinking about it so much. So I just wanted to say to the school committee that I, as superintendent and the educators in the district, very much appreciate the statement that you put out this week. It really was very meaningful to us to read that. And I also think very importantly, as I reflect on the correspondence that I've received this week, that I would just like to say that it's nice to know that the community supports us in this work. So I want to thank people for reaching out over the last few days. We have a long ways to go and I would never suggest otherwise. But I think that over the last two years, we have done some very important work in this area. And it isn't an agenda item tonight, so I don't think we're going to spend a lot of time discussing this issue tonight. But I did ask Allison if she could just quickly review some of the work that we've been engaged in and how we're thinking about it. The committee has already heard about many of these things in prior reports on district goals, but I think it was worth, it's worth just repeating quickly tonight. So I'm going to just share my screen. Okay, let's see. Did not share it correctly, one more try. Okay. And so I'll turn it over to Allison.
Okay, great, thank you. And can folks hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, great. My speaker situation is a little bit buggy here. So I wanted to just say, first of all, the kind of things that I want to talk about are actually things that really we've been intentionally very focused on over the last few years under the umbrella of a district strategic goal, which was around recognizing and supporting the needs of our students and families in an increasingly diverse community. I think there might be a tendency for folks to think that that's a goal that's just about our students of color or just about our LGBTQ students or just about our students with disabilities. But it's actually, we think a goal that's about everybody because the things that we're doing, we see as benefiting our kids as they're, you know, getting ready to leave us and go to college and go to the workplace and go be members in what we hope will be a very civilized society. So I'm going to talk a little bit about curriculum and student learning first. We had a number of goals here that relate to kind of increasing what we're doing and diversification in our curriculum. So the first sort of set of things are actually related to books, unsurprisingly. Our librarians sort of took this on a few years ago, starting with one of our elementary schools and then sort of spreading to a district-wide effort to diversify their book collections within the library. And in addition, our English Language Arts Curriculum Review Team in their kind of look at our curriculum and instructional practice really came up with a major goal, district-wide goal of looking at how the kinds of books that we choose to teach, particularly those books that are whole class books or mentor texts where they're really impacting a lot of our students. And when we look at diversifying books, there's sort of two ways that folks are looking at it. One is thinking about authorship, making sure that the books that we use and the books that we have in our library are really representative of this sort of rich and wonderful diversity of perspectives and identities out there in the world. And then secondly, that the characters in our books are also representative of that wonderful diversity out there in the world because we want our kids to be able to both see themselves in the books that they read and see other people who are not like themselves. So that's kind of a book focus. Another two kind of focus points in this slide relate to the, some student group work that's been going on. So student-to-student education, which can be a very powerful thing. We had back in 19, or 2017, formed a group at the middle school that's a peer leadership group. And then there's also a group that was recently revitalized at the high school called Let's Talk About Race, Culture and Ethnicity. And both of these groups involve students sort of doing self-reflection, some training, and then going out and talking to their peers about issues around race and identity and other sort of difficult issues to talk about. And then finally, I wanted to talk a little bit about social studies. We had just sort of started our curriculum review, which got disrupted by the pandemic. But even early on in that review process, members of the review committee were noticing two places where I think we might see a potential recommendation come out. One has to do with the kind of idea that history needs to be told sort of completely and thoughtfully and thoroughly and not through just a single lens or a single story. And another is that we do want to make sure our social studies classrooms are places where kids really learn to engage thoughtfully with people who have different ideas and different backgrounds and different opinions than their own. I think that, you know, the world has sped up a lot and folks have noticed in education that with the rise of social media, kids aren't seeing as many models out there in the world of how to engage in civil discourse. And we want to make sure that we provide them with those models in school and hope that they learn to talk respectfully with one another and listen respectfully to one another and be open to other people's ideas. So on the next slide, kind of another piece of this effort relates to recruitment and retention of staff of color. You know, I know you all are aware that demographics in the Westwood Public Schools among our students have really changed in the last 20 years. And we are seeing increasing diversity among our students. Our staff diversity has not kept pace with our student diversity. And so we've made a really intentional effort over the last few years to join and partner with different organizations and groups in order to try and look at how do we solve that problem. The Greater Boston Human Resources Network is kind of a local group of communities that are somewhat similar to Westwood, although even that group has diversified itself. And they plan and host a diversity-related job fair. We were able to pull one off last year and this year unfortunately got canceled. In addition, we joined the Department of Ed's Diversity Network, which is, which is this great network of schools from throughout the state. And they provided some great training and resources for us and just ways of thinking about how do we do this work and how do we do it better? There are a couple of other organizations and efforts we made in sort of recruiting and outreach front, including the high school, I want to give the high school folks some recognition for doing some outreach to the historically black colleges and universities in last year's hiring season. And I think finally, one other piece of just this outreach effort relates to the idea of a pipeline. I want to just say this, you know, when you go throughout the state and talk to other people in other districts, this isn't a Westwood problem in particular. It's something that a lot of districts are struggling with. And I think that relates to what people are describing as a pipeline problem. So although our high schools throughout Massachusetts are graduating to really talented, exceptional students of color, many of those students are not choosing to pursue careers in education for one reason or another. And so we're trying to figure out how do we help sort of steer kids toward an education pathway? How do we support them through that pathway? And make sure that they arrive, you know, back in our schools to help lead and teach the next generation of kids coming through those schools. So we have an idea that we've started working on within the district that we're hoping to roll out in the summer of 2021, related to sort of an internship program where some students who are interested in education work with some of our summer programs to gain some experience. It would be a paid internship opportunity. And they would also engage in sort of a seminar with some staff to learn some skills that will help them be more successful if they do want to go into an education career. And students who complete that program would then be given sort of a designation. So if they come back to us and want to interview for a job, they'll be first in line. Finally, I want to talk a little bit about just some thinking about our folks who are already in the district. Last year, as you know, we had a director and that new hire was an opportunity to really examine the position. And one decision we made was to make that position a leadership position for the district as a whole. So Latifah Frank, who's our new and wonderful MECO coordinator or MECO director, now sits on the Administrative Council, which is a leadership team for the district and brings her voice and her experience and her passion to that group. In addition, we formed this last September, December, an affinity group for our existing staff of color. We want to make sure that the folks we have employed currently in the district feel safe and supported and that they have a voice in kind of how we do business here in Westwood. And then our final kind of topic is in professional development and training for our staff. So we did a lot of work in this last year in particular, but I want to say the work is ongoing. It is not a sort of one-shot deal. It's nothing you can sort of very quickly turn on a dime. And we're very committed to keeping it going, looking ahead into the future. So we had district-wide training on our full-day professionals development day last year, as well as several short Wednesdays throughout the fall. Out of that training, we had a welcoming schools group that was formed. And this working group really got together and started talking about how to keep the work going outside of the regular and formal PD structure. So that group has engaged in sort of self-study with some book groups last summer. And then they're going to branch out and offer a book study for all staff who are interested for this summer. In addition, they created training for our new staff that we rolled out this past fall and training for all staff that's designed to be rolled out next fall. And in this sort of professional development effort, we've also seen several wonderful educators in our district who have designed courses around topics like discussions on race in the classroom, creating a more culturally competent classroom. Even one of our very popular courses we've had the last couple of years is about young adult fiction. And one part of that young adult fiction course is looking at books that really deal explicitly with issues around race and identity. And the teachers there have done a fantastic job just helping people think about, you know, if kids are reading these books, how do I help them? How do I support them? And how do I navigate conversations that come up that might be challenging in a classroom for a teacher? We also branched out PD-wise to make sure our elementary educators were included and invited to attend the MECO Professional Development Conference, which is a very popular and really wonderful event every year in December. And finally, just this past Monday, we had the great honor and privilege of having Dina Simmons, who's the Assistant Director of the Yale Center for Emotional Intelligence. And she came and did a webinar for our teachers, looking at sort of two things. One is self-care and the other is the topic of equity in the time of the COVID crisis. Dina's work exists in this intersection of equity and social emotional learning. And I think it's very interesting work to be engaged in and talking about right now because it's very timely, given everything that's happening in our nation. I've had some preliminary conversation with her about the possibility of coming back next year and working in Westwood. And if we can figure out how to make it work, I think, I hope she comes back to join us again. So that's, you know, a very fast speed version of some things that are going on. But I do want to reiterate what Emily said, you know, this is just a start. And we know that it's going to take sustained effort, but I'm excited. I think we've got faculty who are excited about it and committed to it. We've got students who are asking us for it. We've got alumni who are coming back and asking us to really engage in this with a sense of urgency. And we look forward to doing that. Thank you.
I have a quick question.
Sure.
What about our program with Leslie? Is there any opportunity there to expand our diversity through that?
You know, I don't, Leslie itself is not a particularly diverse college as it goes. I don't want to put them down. Abby, you can wave me off if you think I'm definite.
I can comment on that if you want. They do have an initiative to certainly diversify their own teaching ranks into the teacher preparation pipeline. And that is something they're working very thoughtfully about. I don't think it's really fully fledged at this point, Carol, to be honest with you. But we continue to, we're going to welcome five interns in September in whichever format we are in. And we continue to work with them for a lot of the great reasons, you know, we've talked about in the past. So I'll bring that to their attention, that that would be something Westwood's looking for as well.
Thank you.
I have a question. I just wanted to clarify the curriculum piece. I just, you know, wanted to understand whether we're reviewing the curriculum for incorporation of different perspective, different texts into the core curriculum? Or whether this is, you know, we're looking at, you know, almost alternative, you know, literature? Meaning, you know, instead of teaching To Kill a Mockingbird, right? From that perspective, will we teach The Hate U Give or something like that? You know, as part of what everyone reads in high school, kind of thing.
Right. I think, so I think at the high school level, what I would say is our teachers are really thoughtful about balance. They want to do, they do want to begin to update some of our core texts so to make sure that those really reflect the issues and concerns of our students now. And, but they also want to be able to hold on to some literature that feels like old and timeless, right? And I think, you know, nobody's throwing out Shakespeare anytime soon and, or, you know, making, you know, ditching major poets or things like that. But they are really making some sort of incremental change over time to those texts so that we should see kind of broader perspective. If you look at even the, you know, the summer reading list is more of an auxiliary thing. I think you're talking about what about the main text in the classroom? And that is something that they are looking at and working on too, so.
Okay. Just to add to that discussion too, I mean, it's an interesting point that you make, man. And I know we're a committee, so this is discussion. But I liked the point that you made, Allison, though, about balance. Because of course, there's some literature that we want to incorporate that is far more diverse. But we also have to learn from some of the old classics. If we ignore that, then we've ignored what's been going on in our country for a long time, so.
Yeah, and.
Yeah, go ahead.
And I'm certainly not suggesting we, you know, throw out the curriculum and start over. I think what I'm saying is if we're teaching a lesson, let's say we're teaching a lesson about racism, you know, we should look to see what perspective we're teaching, right? Are we teaching it from the perspective of Scout, which is a white girl? Or are we teaching it from the perspective of Starr, which is a black girl? And I think if we can think about the perspective in terms of the lesson and maybe look, there's a way to diversify perspectives within the same lesson, then I think that would be beneficial for everybody.
I am 100% sure that the English department of the high school is right there with you. I mean, it wouldn't be, it would be sort of lip surface to diversifying the texts if all the heroes were still the white kids, right?
Right.
It's sort of another way of putting that.
Good. The last thing I'd say, I mean, I commend you. I think, I mean, the recruiting thing, I understand, the recruiting piece, I know, isn't like you can turn on a switch. We only have so many hires a year, probably unfortunately less in this environment. And it takes, I think, I like the idea of building a pipeline and trying, whether it be through interns, student teaching, you know, build it. Because I think my sense of some of these other things every other district's doing and not having success with, you know, like we can all do career, I mean, nothing wrong with career fairs, but, but like I think the more you can build where people have connections with Westwood is my sense. And I know that you won't be able to turn on a switch and suddenly, you know, move the diversity numbers. But, you know, three years down the road, I just continue to, you know, support that because I think it will pay dividends down the road.
Thank you, thank you. I think, you know, one piece of this, I don't know if I mentioned, we really have taken a hard look this spring, actually just right before the closure, we did some work looking at our materials that we use to recruit staff with, our job descriptions, you know, the, our website, the way we sort of post things, the way we talk about ourselves, the way we talk about other people, just to sort of understand. We, more broadly, this is about recruiting all people, but particularly for candidates of color, we want it to be a place that feels like it's going to support their needs and be an interesting, exciting place to work too. And not, a little bit of the sense that was coming across before was sort of like, you know, we're awesome, you know, why don't you come join us maybe? And I think that's a hard message for some people to want to be part of, right? I think we are awesome, but in a friendly way.
Thank you, thank you for that report, Allison.
Thank you, guys. I think you're doing great, great work, so more to come.
More to come, for sure. Thanks. Okay, so one other thing that was not technically listed on superintendent's report, I just wanted to do a cell tower update because I think there have been some questions out there. So just to remind folks, the school committee had voted that we would not renew our lease with AT&amp;T for the cell tower that's on the middle school. The lease is up on July 31st. The lease contains a four-month grace period following that date to remove the equipment. So that gets us to the end of November. We have clearly indicated to AT&amp;T that we are not renewing this lease. We understand that AT&amp;T has identified a new location for their tower. However, the COVID-19 situation has put a small delay on the process of making the transition. Throughout this, we've had some conversations with the town. And in those conversations, a concern surfaced about service because AT&amp;T service is important for our first responders in Westwood. And so in order to avoid an interruption of service, we may have to allow the grace period to go on for one or two months longer. And based on our conversations, we actually think that's important in terms of the safety measure. But I want the school committee and the public to know that we have in no way reversed their decision to remove the cell tower. We are going forward as the committee voted. As you know, we built the loss of revenue into the FY '21 budget. We have not renewed the lease. And in fact, AT&amp;T wanted to come speak to the school committee and kind of, you know, make your case in person. And we told them, no, we're not open to that discussion. So we are moving forward with that. I just wanted to update you on that too. Also, just want to mention that we are going to be producing a survey for parent feedback on remote learning and student feedback also. And that that survey, we think, will be going out tomorrow or at the latest, the beginning of next week, but we hope tomorrow. So it will be going to parents and the different survey would be going to kids in grades three and 12. And we just want to learn what the experience this spring has been like. Okay.
A couple of things, can you circulate that survey?
Can you circulate it? Yep, sure.
And then the other thing, just to make it more tactical, if you could send a reminder, I mean, when you send a reminder, I'd like to get a good sample here. So I don't know how long it'll be open. I guess, I'm guessing a week, people are going to kind of disappear. So I'd love to get a good sample here. Thank you.
Yep, great.
Can I ask Emily, when you'll have more of an idea of how you're going to proceed in the fall?
So I'm about to talk about that, Josephah, stay tuned. I have slides.
Yeah.
COVID-19 impact, we'll transition to that. So the state released guidance for summer camps a little over a week ago. It was a 32-page document. And we did examine it and we decided upon thought that we needed to cancel our summer enrichment program. We did not think that we could adhere to those guidelines in the short amount of time we would need to be up and running. We are, however, working with our community partners at REC because they use our facilities. And so we've been collaborating with them to support them in their efforts to have something up and running for REC. Our priority, however, is running our Special Education Extended School Year Program, what we call ESY. That is our top priority. This past Sunday, I think, DESI released guidance on summer instructional programs. And so based on that guidance, we are currently working very closely with families individually to identify students for whom we think in-person programming is most critical this summer. And also whether or not families are comfortable sending their students for in-person programming right now. So our sort of early estimate is that we think that we can run the program with about 25% capacity for in-person as compared to prior years. And that we will also be able to provide remote services for other students who are eligible for ESY but aren't intending in-person. It's going to involve a whole lot of logistics and planning, smaller groups, social distancing, a larger footprint, PPE, screening protocol calls and hands cleaning, disinfecting. And so I do just want to acknowledge Abby and also Lisa Friedman, who is our ESY director, and just the student services team. Our goal is to be able to start the program by July 6th. And so it's a daunting task, but they are doing it. And I joined Abby at the CPAC meeting on Tuesday night, I think, this week. It's great turnout, we're about maybe 40 people there, wonderful group. We were sort of talking through all of this. And just want to acknowledge that this is very challenging for parents and they've been incredibly supportive and we really, we appreciate that.
Virtual meeting?
It was a virtual meet, of course, that's, yes. We are reading virtually, we're on a Zoom call like this. So they were great. And it's interesting because there are people who are very eager to get their kids back for in-person programming. And I would say on the call, I felt like there was maybe even an equal number of people who were indicating that they're not comfortable with that at this point. And so they were asking questions about what we could do remotely for the summer. So that was good, that was a good conversation for us to start getting some perspective on that. That was important. Okay, in terms of the fall, so I'm going to share again here. All right, so fall opening, reopening, what we know. I think it's safe to say that COVID-19 will be impacting our schools in the near term and possibly the longer term. And so we anticipate that we will have to make modifications to instruction, to operations and how we function. I think, you know, I imagine that we're all in agreement that health and safety are a top priority for us. And I want to assure people that we are also really thinking about holistic student wellness. This has been a very disruptive time and we know there are impacts to that. And we are thinking about that. I think we're going to need to be flexible, we're going to have to be adaptable. And in this planning, we know we're going to do our best to make a good plan and that it might have to be modified as things go along. And certainly, communication is going to be absolutely critical, both internally and also clearly with the community and with parents. So what we know. So what we know, we have been told that we will be, school districts will be getting guidance from the state about fall reopening in mid-June. And I had really been hanging my hat, I had heard June 15th as a date thrown around, and I had really hoped that that was going to happen. We did get a communication earlier in the week that used the phrase that they would be getting us this guidance in a week or two. So that's starting to feel like not mid-June anymore, if it's two weeks. But we are anxiously awaiting this guidance. What we've been told is that we should expect that we will have to plan for various contingencies. And I'll say more about that in a sec. That the model for school will likely be different. We imagine that we will be dealing with parameters around social distancing, the use of PPE. And it has been strongly suggested in some calls with the commissioner that we start to get our heads around the possibility of a hybrid model in the fall. And I just want to say that out loud tonight. I know it's taking us a little time to get our heads around it internally. And, but I think that that is a likely scenario.
Sorry, can you clarify what you mean by hybrid model?
Yes, give me one second, I'm going to flip to the next slide, ma'am.
Okay, sorry.
Nope, it was a good question. So we have also been told that our top priority this week is that we need to begin purchasing PPE. And last Friday, the state released a guidance document. It's a guidance document that I think has created a lot of, you know, chatter among the public and also in the media. The intention of the document was to let us know what we needed to start buying. And we've been directed to purchase a three-month supply. And the idea is we need to start with that process now because the supply chain, you know, there's delays in the supply chain right now. So we are actively working on that. Okay, so we're thinking about the continuum of what could happen, right? This is just, this is hypothetical here, right? We could have a situation where we're fully remote, that's where all kids are home. That's like, you know, now. And it could be that schools have to open this way. It could also be that we need to have a remote learning plan in place in case we have intermittent closures and we have to sort of switch between models. The other end of the continuum is in-person learning. All students attend in-person with some kind of set of safety practices in place. That's what I would, if we got to that place, I would think of it as sort of, you know, maybe not normal, but the new normal. In between there is a hybrid model. And in a hybrid model, some students are in school while some students learn remotely. And, you know, as a result of some kind of scheduled reduction of students on campuses because of student health concerns or requirements around social distancing. And so let me say clearly that we have not been told that this is the model. So I am speaking hypothetically at the moment. But one version of that would be, let's say, that you have students, you know, half the school in school face-to-face with their teacher for a week. And then the second week, that half of kids are home, working remotely on things that the teacher has created that are asynchronous. And you are alternating weeks. So it's sort of, you know, one, one group is in school, the other group is home, and then the following week it switches. So that would be an example of a hybrid model. And it is just hypothetically that I'm saying this, but I will say it is a model that I have been hearing quite a bit of discussion about. So, so we are going to be getting this guidance document soon. And then we are going to have to start thinking about how we would be able to adapt to what comes to us. It has been communicated to us that the guidance document, I keep saying guidance, but really what's been communicated to us is that it will be a plan and that it will be fairly prescriptive for districts. I think there is a sense that there does need to be some uniformity among districts. And that is related to lots of things. But one is that our, you know, the teaching force teaches in one community and has their own children in another, and that there does need to be some sense that we're all doing a similar, a similar thing. So I don't know, quite honestly, how much choice we're going to have about some, some aspects of this. But this is just speculation at this point, so hopefully we'll know something concrete.
That's a question. So, and this would apply for middle school, I think, in high school. I think this would be challenging for the younger kids. Is there a possibility of a hybrid model, which is this, half the kids in school, half of them are watching on video, the same class?
Yes, so we, and yes, thank you for saying that. We have, we've certainly been brainstorming different possibilities and that, that is possible. So one of the things that, that Lemon and I were talking about earlier today is, on our purchasing list, we think we need to think about buying, I don't know what they're technically called, I call them like swivel arms that you could have a camera on in a classroom for just that purpose. So that maybe some kids are in person and other kids are watching.
Emily, do you anticipate that many parents or some parents will choose not to send their kids to school even if you are open?
So that is, that is certainly another consideration. And one of the things that we will be doing, and the districts have been encouraged to do, and I think it makes a lot of sense, to be surveying parents. I want to be clear that the survey we're sending out on Friday is about feedback about remote learning. But we will also have to be surveying people about questions like that. So, and that we will need to survey them multiple times, I think, between now and school. Because as the public health situation changes, people's feelings about what they're comfortable with might change as well, right? So we'll want to ask them about, you know, if we were opening under this condition, would, you know, would you be inclined to send your student to school? Would you be inclined to have your student ride a bus? And that's going to be important for us to stay in touch with families and to understand sort of what situation we're dealing with.
So you have, you have to have multiple plans in place, ready to go?
Yes, I think that's what it comes down to. We need to, yeah, we need to have multiple plans in place. So, I mean, it is, it is a daunting task, I will be honest. The district leadership team, we spent an entire day together, not together, on a Zoom call, just starting to frame up the work to be done and thinking about the questions. And, you know, it was, it, it, it sort of makes your head explode a little bit to think about it. So how are we going to plan? Well, clearly, we need to, we're going to be following guidance that we received from DESI. I keep saying DESI, I want to clarify, there's a working group at the state level that's comprised of, not just DESI. So it's, it is teachers, administrators, superintendents, public health officials, medical personnel, public safety. So it's really, it's sort of the blue ribbon panel approach. And that is the group that will be putting together this, this document that we're supposed to receive. And we also think that there is available guidance from other reputable institutions. So we've been reading other things about school reopening. Certainly, there are schools in other countries that have started to open back up and there are lessons to be learned there. Obviously, we're going to need to have sort of open discussions that allow for feedback and input. We'll incorporate research where it's available. I said we're learning from international challenges. We are very much connecting with other regional districts. So, you know, we're spending a lot of time talking to our colleagues and sharing ideas together. And we know that the working groups that we will be setting up, which I'm going to show on the next slide, are going to have to communicate with each other. Because we, we realize, and I'm going to show you the working groups here, we've been trying to think about different categories of issues that will have to be addressed. And there are some, some different categories that emerge. And then when you start thinking about them, you realize how interconnected these categories are. And so our plan is to have a steering committee that oversees the work of these four working groups that I have here. Teaching and learning, health and wellness, human resources, and operations. And you can see here some of the topics that we think each of these working groups will be taking on. We have thought about what the composition of these working groups needs to be in terms of the different roles. So obviously, there will be administrators and teachers. We want to involve our instructional assistants, support staff, our food services people, clearly our operations department. And so we, we're going to be bringing in groups to work through these logistics. And then you can see in the center there, I have advisory group. Because I also think we need to form an advisory group with some of our community partners, you know, public health, like to have some medical representatives, some parents. And the function of the advisory group would be a group that we can vet the work of the working groups in sort of an iterative way. So that we make sure we're considering, you know, all perspectives and that we don't miss something. So this is how we're starting to, to think of, think of the work. The, the timeline, so the working groups, so we don't have the guidance yet. And we, we basically, other than sort of trying to frame up what the work is to be, to be done, I don't think it's a good investment of time and resources to, just to speculate and start planning hypothetically. And frankly, we are, we're sort of out straight right now, getting the, the school year closed out. And so we will wait and get that guidance. I have to be honest, I think a lot of us then need to take a week off at this point and kind of regroup and do something restorative. And then the working groups will start meeting throughout July. We typically, we have as part of our budget funds for summer curriculum work. And this year, we did not put out a call for summer curriculum proposals. Instead, we're reallocating our summer curriculum money to do this work. We hope to have a fairly solid plan to communicate by July 31st. And I put here, of course, we will be having to communicate along the way during the planning process. And if we can reach that goal of July 31st, then that will give us August to execute tasks and to implement the plan. And we think there's going to be a lot of work to be done operationally in August to be ready, to be ready to open. So that, that's sort of the, the big picture overview of where we are. I'll stop sharing here so I can see you.
So questions?
Yes.
I just want to say thank you. I know that you guys, the district administration, the faculty, the staff, everybody has just been flat out since March. And to pivot like that so quickly and to get where we are today, honestly, I'm just very grateful that we have all of you in place. I know there's so much more work to be done. I think that, you know, I feel like, as you said, you need at least a week. And when this is all over, you might need months and months of vacation. But, but anyway, I just want to say thank you. I know this is just a lift that nobody expected ever that you guys would have to bear. And I just want to say thank you for it.
Well, thanks for saying that. I mean, I, I, I say this all the time. I've never been more appreciative of the team of educators in this district than I have been in the last three months. It's remarkable. And I have to say, I, I am, I'm very appreciated to be, appreciative to be in Westwood. I think the community has been very, very supportive. And, you know, we appreciate that everyone has kind of recognized the scope of the challenge and been willing to work with us, so it's been great.
So with Mayor, what Mayor said, it's amazing what you've done in a short period of time and how much more you have to do over the next seven months is just overwhelming to me. So to all of you.
Yeah, one comment I just want to make, and this is partly, I know there's some questions coming in about the budget. Emily said to me, I think it was today, was that even just the equipment, the PPE equipment and all that, they're saying is an average of $500 per student. So just to put that in, that's $1.5 million. And so the reason I cite that is you look back and talk about that, you talk about additional, you know, technology, you talk about all sorts of additional, there's a lot of additional costs in there. And I just want to say that, that in our budget is going to be, you know, assuming it gets passed next week at town meeting, our budget, while we can reallocate, you know, there's not more money that we can get than that is a budget. But I just wanted to kind of cite that, that these things don't, they don't come free, as we know, so.
Yes, Lemon reminds us of this daily as we're talking about our planning. Yeah, yeah. And then unfortunately, the, the, the expenses are significant, they really are. And clearly, that isn't the premise that the budget was built on, so.
Yeah, and we, and I just, and unlike Washington DC, we can't print money in Westwood, unfortunately.
No, no, we are not allowed to operate at a deficit here in the Westwood Public Schools, right?
Thank you. Any other questions for the superintendent?
I have one last thing, a good news slide to share.
We love good news.
I thought there should be something that was.
More like we need good news.
And that just is, things that have been happening for the seniors. That have been great. And so I want to do a shout out to Mr. Mao, who spent two days this past week where seniors and their families could come and he took all of these photos. He took, he took more than 3,000 photos in two days where kids could come in their cap and gown and have their picture taken with their diploma in this big old frame. And then you can see he did family portraits standing out in front of the Westwood High School sign. And if you want a little lift, you can, these, these photos are all actually on the high school website. There's a flyout menu and it says Mr. Mao's photos. And I spent a reasonable amount of time flipping through those photos because it was people who were happy and proud. And you'll see some of the families, you know, people got dressed up, they brought their dogs. They're just awesome pictures. So thank you to Mr. Mao for, for making that special thing possible. We got some good press in terms of the senior drive-out. And, you know, Mr. Bevan commented to me that some of the things that have been the simplest to organize have turned out to be the most successful. And he pointed to the drive-out as something that the, the seniors just really, you know, were very excited about, is where they gave out the senior superlatives and this great event. And then the senior concept, rebranded class day. And I remember a couple of months ago at school committee, Josephah, you made some comment about, maybe, you, you started to say, maybe it'll be even better. And then you kind of stopped yourself, but, you know, still good. And I've been through a lot of Westwood High School class days. I have to say, I think this might have been better. It was atmospheric, it was fun.
That's what I've been hearing all week.
Yeah, yeah.
All positive feedback.
It's been great. And so I, I think it was just really well done. I mean, I'm, I'm sure that a lot of effort went into making it seem effortless. It ran really well. And this picture right here always makes me laugh. It's the high school administrative team, they look like the Avengers or something. So thank you to all of the teachers and students. And our operations department did so much work to make that happen and really appreciate it. Last thing I need to make a plug, the middle school. Tomorrow night, 7:00 PM, they are doing, it's like a dinner theater performance. And so there will be live at 7 o'clock, student performances, the Performing Arts Showcase. And the Westwood Friends of the Performing Arts have partnered with Chiara, Westwood Pizza, and Blue Orchid. Families can go get takeout, mention that this is the event that you are purchasing for. Proceeds will go to the Westwood Friends of the Performing Arts. You can take your takeout home and, and watch some performances while you eat as a family. And I think it's going to be a great event, so. And that is it.
Great.
Okay. Great. All right, so I think we're moving on to the school committee chair update in the Arizona report. Before, why don't I start with a couple of things, then I'll go for the community update. So town meeting, just a reminder, I think everyone here knows, reminder for people watching, town meeting is scheduled for next Wednesday, the 18th at 5 o'clock in Flay Hive. It will be, you know, so you can register, I think you register starting maybe at 4:00 or 4:30, but 5 o'clock is when it starts. There'll be, the quorum has been reduced significantly. They'll only be tackling the financial. They'll only be tackling the financial articles, but most, you know, included, but that does include obviously the budget I mentioned, as well as our capital requests. So we encourage people to obviously go out and hopefully support the budget because it's obviously critical to achieving what we want to achieve. As well as the rain date is the 19th. Justefer, do you have a question?
I thought it was the 17th was town meeting, the 18th was was the rain date.
I think that is true.
That's right. When is the 17th?
Yes, I'm, yeah, sorry, my apologies. So yeah, thinking, today is Thursday. Yeah. The 17th, yes. So what is the correct Tuesday, the 17th?
Wednesday.
Rain date, and it looks like it's going to be a good day on the 17th, so.
Okay, no, sorry. Wednesday, the 17th, and then main date, 18th, apologies. And I think that was an on town meeting. I think just another more logistical item, I don't know if it's been scheduled yet, we're going to have a short school committee meeting on the 19th at 7:45. It's going to be before this SBC.
No, the 18th, right?
No, the 19th.
I just want to say who's on first.
But at that meeting, we're just going to reorganize. So that will reorganize the board. That'll be Amanda Phillips' first meeting. And we're going to do some voting on the SBC membership. So that'll be a very short procedural five minute meeting right before the SBC. And I don't know if that's been scheduled, unless you have any calendar. I think that was it from me. Mayor, do you have any update on the building?
Yeah, so I feel like we've turned a corner on the building project. We have a recommendation for a final option. The evaluation subcommittee made a recommendation to the SBC a week and a half ago. And the final recommendation is for a new school, to consolidate Hanlon and Deerfield at the Deerfield site for a enrollment population of 560 at the peak. And build a new school. And the winning design is what we're calling the tree design. This is all on our website, if you want to go take a look. So that's the recommendation to this school building committee. The school building committee is meeting tomorrow to discuss some sustainability options. And then we'll take the actual vote on the recommended option next Friday, the 19th. So that's where we are. We, as a school committee, have a few votes tonight that we're going to have to take in connection with the project. So I just want to run through those. The first one is that we just need to, it deals with the enrollment of 560 students. We just need to vote that the school committee supports the project option that has an enrollment of 560 students. The second vote is for redistricting because this option will require a consolidation of Hanlon and Deerfield, so it's a redistricting issue. So again, we need to take a vote to support the redistricting. The third vote deals with the the design study. If you recall, we, as a school committee, approved design funds in the amount not to exceed $30,000. I think we did this in February. And we allocated those monies for the study, the design study of whatever elementary school or schools were not going to be a part of the MSBA. This is sort of to to produce a high level design concepts for that school. So if the recommendation of the evaluation criteria is is approved by the school building committee, that school that's not part of the project will be sheen. So we just need to approve, designate that those $30,000 that design study fund would be spent on the sheen school in the event that the project is approved by the SBC. And the final vote we're going to be taking tonight is for Deerfield. Again, if the SBC approves, these are all, these two are both contingent. Actually, they're all really contingent votes. If the SBC approves the recommended option, then the Deerfield school will be vacated. So we, as a school committee, need to vote whether to so once we determine whether or not we'll need the Deerfield school for swing space for the sheen school or for any other district purpose. If we don't, if we decide we don't need it for district purposes, then we that we would revert control of the Deerfield school back to the town. I think I said that very confusedly, but hopefully you got the gist. So if not, let me know. I can try and explain it better. But those are the four votes that the school committee will be taking under the action items. And I have, I have the language, so I can make the motions and hopefully the motions will be clearer than I was just now. So otherwise, oh, we also had a community forum last week where we presented the recommended option to the community. And I think we had a good turnout. And we seemed to have some interesting questions, we did have some interesting questions. And overall, I think that, you know, that people seemed supportive of the recommended option. And of course, we are still taking feedback on any of it. So if anybody has any additional feedback, certainly click on the link in the school, in the school building project website and submit your questions or comments. And we, of course, will take a look and respond as quick as we can. And I think that's it. Next steps is if it approves, if this SBC approves the project, then we file our recommended option with the MSBA in July. Hopefully, they approve it in August and then we move into schematic design. So where we really fine tune that that design. So that's where we are. No questions? Well, okay.
Tony, I forgot there was an item under superintendent's report that Lemma just wanted to say word about where we are with FY20 budget closeout. If you wanted to say just a couple of words about that.
Sure. And I just think, I just, maybe we swap, we do the budget closeout, and maybe you just go straight into the capital, Lemma. Then we, then we do the evaluation afterwards. Great.
Okay, so just a few comments on the budget closeout. At this time of year, you know, most of our non-salary expenses have really firmed up and we can see the finish line. We do have some payroll expenses that will continue to hit the budget because most teachers get continued pay through the summer. But with that level of clarity now, what I'm seeing is that we're, we're going to be able to close the year. I'm not at all concerned about being able to do so with the available funds that we have and the resources. Some of the decision points will be, you know, where, where, what resources financially to leverage. So how we want to treat circuit breaker and how much funding we'd like to leave there. What I'm anticipating is that we'll be able to leave at least 400,000 in the circuit breaker account for next year, which would be helpful to supplement any additional funding we get next year and to help us have sufficient funds there to cover the offset that we budgeted for. So that's what I anticipate there. I've also been working closely with the town to make some early PPE purchases. And that has depleted some of our funds, but the town has been supportive in that regard and has offered to use CARES funding to offset some of the expenses on PPE that we've made in FY20. So that's there. We've also been in discussion around how to resolve the deficits in extended day and food service that we've previously discussed here with the school committee. And so we're also collaborating on that and, you know, that, so those are the key variables as we bring the budget to a close. If you have any questions on that, let me know. But overall, I would say that we're in a strong position to close the budget year and also to leave a little bit of funding in strategic places for, as resources for next year. So we can move into FY21 capital update.
Questions or anyone? Okay, great.
FY20.
Lemma, do you want me to share my screen or are you going to share yours?
I can share my screen. So everyone seeing that at this point. Great. So for the FY21 capital update, I will first share with you that we have our FY21 proposed annual capital funding, which is the rightmost column on this table. That is the basically a breakdown of funding that we have proposed to the town for FY21 capital. This will be discussed at the annual town meeting next week. And you see in the table just that it's a higher number than we have had in historically. So looking back three or four years ago, the town, you know, town has invested a good deal of money to up our capital funds in FY20 and in FY21. I've highlighted a couple of rows here, FFNE, HVAC and repair and maintenance lines. We have between these three lines, 700 and 7,000. And I'd like to discuss just what we might be doing with those funds in the comings, in the coming summer and next year. So first, there are some key projects that will be funded this summer and we feel we just can't do without. No matter what happens at town meetings, so in our operating budget, we'd have to make room for this. And what I'm accounting for here are critical systems or building envelope repairs. So some examples are boiler replacement at the sheen, feed, feed tank leak repair at the Hanlon, skylight repair. With sheen exterior window abatement. So these are safety and critical repairs that we will need to get through the year and we would fund on our operating budget if necessary. So that's the bare minimum that we would do. The next slide shows you additional projects that we would prioritize pending the town vote. And so if we have our approved capital budget as proposed, we'll be prioritizing prioritizing these next projects. Here, the most expensive and the key one is the Westwood High School recommissioning of the UNIVANs and some other miscellaneous HVAC work at the high school. We also have, we had previously worked with the REC to plan for an addition of the maintenance bay. And if the REC proceeds with that, we may continue to partner with them. If they don't, we'll redeploy those funds. And there are some miscellaneous things here. You'll see that we were focusing on bathrooms and HVAC and utility pieces that will also keep our buildings functioning optimally for next year. So those are some other additional priorities. In looking at our capital budget for the summer and annual investments, we are deferring some things that we otherwise may have looked to do. Some of this stuff is, you know, district ride paving or repairs to basketball courts. We use some roof repairs or AC installations. So these are things for now, given our budget situation, we have decided that we can postpone and we'll review again when looking at FY22 or future years. So that's our list there. We also have had some conversations around FFNE. And here, these are furniture and fixtures that we would want to invest in in FY21. A lot of this is pending, I would say, so we haven't made decisions on how we'll be spending the FFNE spent money. And that is because we're waiting for state guidance on what we will be doing next year, how we'll be reopening schools. Some examples here, you know, we might need some modifications to main office and reception areas. We might need to have specialized furniture or partitions in libraries. We'll need to invest in some cleaning equipment and we might need to install some more bottle fillers in the schools. So there are things we're looking to do and we'll wait to see. We'll be moving on this in the summer, but we'll have to pivot quickly after we get our FY21 capital budget.
Lemma, water bottle fillers, what does that take the place of? What do we used to call them? Bubblers?
Exactly. So some of the guidance we've gotten is that the bottle fillers are a better way for students to to have access to water in school. And it's a little bit easier to keep clean and to, you know, from the spread of germs. So that's one of our, it's been an initiative that we've had. It's already a priority and was on our capital list. But we might make sure that we do more of that this summer in anticipation of the needs. So there's that. And I have to say, the funds are limited, so we won't get everything we'd like, but we will be looking to do whatever we can within the available funding here. So that's, that's, those are those three areas, FFNE, building maintenance repairs and and other capital repairs. Then there are two other areas I'd like to highlight, and that's technology and vehicles. In technology, we're leveraging funds that we did not spend from FY20. And we would hope that if our FY21 budget is approved, that we'd have an additional 130 there to spend in technology. And we have a proposed 60K for vehicles in FY21. Are looking to make, in terms of technology investments, mostly upgrades. So there's going to be a significant laptop refresh in the elementary schools that we're estimating to cost 127,000. And then there's a Chromebook refresh for select grades, not all the grades. And that will also be 284,000. So roughly, these are the preliminary numbers we have on these. But we, we have already started to make moves to execute on this because we know this is vital for remote learning as if we need it next year. We also, if the FY21 capital budget is approved, plan to proceed with the purchase of a truck because the truck that we've got is just falling apart and it's becoming a safety issue there. So that will also be a priority for next year. I should mention that while we're waiting for the FY21 budget to to be voted on, the town has been very supportive. And they've been working with me to help also leverage these of CARES fund, if necessary, to help us purchase some of the MacBooks, for example, that we will be needing next year. So for things that we felt that the lead time on the order just couldn't wait until July, we've, we've moved early in collaboration with the town. I'm very grateful for the help that we've gotten there. And lastly, we are, we do have some other capital requests that are part of our proposed budget to the town. And the two chief things here are, number one, some continued security upgrades in the amount of 150,000 and the final phase of the Thurston HVAC UNIVAN project, also 150,000 there. If we get the proposed budget approved, we will proceed with both of these projects. Some work at the Thurston is going to happen regardless because we do have some funding, carryover funding remaining from FY20. So we'll be using that this summer to continue to make improvements in the UNIVANs at Thurston and some funding from the Green Communities grant, thanks to also collaboration with Tom Fulb in there. In terms of security, our priorities are going to be to continue with lock replacements, this time focusing on specialized doors that weren't previously addressed. And potentially an improvement to the Westwood High School main entrance vestibule, screening abilities there and upgrading of cameras and warning systems. So those are some of the things we might look to do with our security funding. That's it for capital. I'm open to any questions there.
Yeah, a few questions. So, so if I, am I right that the 391 is basically the delta? What's the total of the deltas of the 391? Delta being funds in theory we allocate to other capital needs.
Yeah, I mean, I'll admit that this 391, that's here, some of this, we didn't, we didn't necessarily plan to do all of it in FY21. But I'm giving a few case studies of things that we would certainly be postponing. I, I think some of the AC installations, for example, were certainly on our FY21 plan originally.
And so what's the delta, I guess, what's the, in other words, what's, if you take all this together, what's the amount of money you say, you know what, we can take 200,000 and spend it on, you know, whatever, some of these other things that come down from the state?
So I'd say we, we could have 300,000 that we are saying we're leaving flexible.
Okay. Yeah, that's fine.
Exactly, about half of it.
Ballpark, okay. In there, another question, is there, I know, I think we asked this last time, but is there any anticipation of any, anything coming down from any other government authority on capital or no? Or any hope? No? And then a different, another question, roofing. So if we have a balance there, is it legal if we want it, in theory? If we needed additional funds, could you take the roofing money and reallocate it if it's in the fund?
No, I mean, it's designated for roofing, so that's the challenge. I think we, it would be restricted. It's been designated by the town specifically for roofing purposes over multiple years. So we've carried it over, but it's, it's specific, specified.
Do we have to put the 100,000 in this year? That we wouldn't have to do though, would we?
Well, we've already proposed that, but I could, that one, we, we could discuss with the town to see if we have any flexibility. But it's been proposed as such with this division. We'll look to see whether there's room to change there.
We could amend it on town floor.
I, I would hesitate. I hear your point about concerns and and needs to reserve funding for and to put it next year based on the guidance that we get. But I also recognize that we have a lot of roofing needs. And I wouldn't necessarily want to deplete that budget because it creates a problem in the potentially very near future. So Martha Jones does have some significant projects that are required. We might not tackle them next year, but they're on our radar. And there are other schools that might also need some work.
No, I know, but this is a once in a hundred year pandemic. So, okay, that was like, any other questions on capital? Okay, so I know we're switching around. I wanted to do the budget stuff before we did public participation. So why don't we do, go to public participation? So why don't we do, go to public participation and then we'll conclude with the, um, evaluation and the action items. So.
Sorry, Tony, when you do the public participation, can we just make sure, you know, sometimes, um. People come through, but we don't know who they are. Can we just make sure we, that folks are identifying?
Yep, I will do that.
Thanks.
So there's a number, so why don't I kind of go one by one? There's a, a few connected, but, um. So the first one was from Jessica Castor Lee at one sixteen Green Hill Road. And the comment, or quite, it's a really question, why not consider cutting busing to make everyone drop off? Put classes in the cafe gyms and auditoriums and then hire more teachers to make classes of ten. So I think this feels with some of the information out in the press that you talked about around some of the state that we're waiting on. But I don't know if you have anything else to comment on.
Um, so let me say that this, that there's been a lot in the press about class sizes being limited to ten. And it is true that that is the guidance for the summer program, ten kids with two instructors. And, um, I think that that number that, that people have picked up on actually came from the PPE guidance. We did receive, uh, superintendent's received a communication from the commissioner. Cautioning that we should not extrapolate that that is what the group size is going to be for the fall. So, um, we'll see. And I will say quite honestly, I cannot imagine that that would be the required group size. In the fall, there is no school district that could afford that. Could afford that. Um, and so I can't imagine that's what it's going to be. Um. So I think we need to wait and see what the, what the guidance turns out to be. Um. Even if we could take our students and divide them up into classes of no greater than ten, the reason that school districts can't afford that. Is that the increased staff and the costs associated with that would just be prohibitive. Um, so I, I just want to, you know, sort of provide context that our proposed budget is about forty eight million dollars. Forty two million of the forty eight is salaries. That is by far what we spend our money on. The school district, and that gives you a sense of scale, you know, if we were to suddenly cut all of our class sizes in half and double the number of classes. I mean, we, we wouldn't be able to afford that. The, the busing point is an interesting one though. And, um. The working groups will explore all options. Um, we do spend, what's our transportation budget? About one point two million, I'm going to say, somewhere around there, Lema. Yeah, for transportation, regular, yeah. And there are, um, requirements for schools to provide trans, some transportation. But we, we in Westwood provide much more than is required, right? So I, it's something like kids in grades K to six who live more than two miles from school. We are required to provide transportation. But for example, you know, we provide transportation for the high school. That is not required. That is something that we do, um, as a district. So. I mean, those are the kinds of things that we could start looking at. There would be some complicated math to be done. Um, because we also charge a transportation fee. So, and that's budgeted as an offset. So, you know, we would have to, to figure that out. And, um, clearly there would be significant community impact. And I think that we'd have to think very carefully about, about that.
Thank you. I'm going to kind of flip around. There's a question on Metco. I'll do that at the end. Um, the next three questions I think are connected, so why don't I, um, leave them out? Um, the first question from Jasmine. God, just if I say the name wrong, Leelock at twenty nine Chamberlain Avenue. Um, and I should also note before I read the comment, um, Ms. Leelock also submitted a letter to the school committee. Um, that I'll submit into the letter, to the record, uh, that has a number of, um, signatures on it as well. So I'll submit that into the record as well. Um, but her question was, was her comment was, please, we consider eliminating the fourteen point five FTE from the education budget. So that's the first comment, but why not read the other two comments because they're, I think, connected with budget. Um, the next comment is from Karen Albers, one oh five Edgewood Road. The comment slash question is, there's concern among the community regarding cutting FTEs during a time when there are mental health concerns. Anxiety, difficulties with needed changes to class size for safety. Is it possible to shift money instead to allow for attention of FTEs that are currently planned to be cut? Thank you. The final comment connected with the budget was from Donna Morrison, who lives at three oh three Oak Street. And the comment is, can the budget be helped by students purchasing and providing own supplies and devices? For example, some PPE can be provided by families that can be of assistance to the schools. Students can provide all paper, markers, pens, et cetera, and bring them to and from school. So I mean, I guess my first one of our comment on the, and all these is a lot of this stuff is to be worked through. Um, for example, that last one around pens and, and, and the equipment. I, you know, that's going to be somewhat dictated, I think, by what the state says. Um, I think on the, and just speaking to the school committee, everyone chime in, I think on the budget, we had a long conversation last time. Around the superintendent present recommendations on the fourteen point five. Uh, we thought it was, I think, as committee prudent, um, given the anticipated reductions in. Um, revenues from things like, um, chap, you know, the chapter money. As well as, um, lots of anticipated costs to do these reductions. I will say, um, I don't believe there was anything cut directly connected to this social emotional learning. I'd have to look back, um, as far as counselors, um, coordinators, we thought that was a priority. Um, but that was, I think, we talked along about that last time, obviously. Um, this is, it's challenging times, but we just thought it had to be prudent as a committee as we go into the next year. I think the other thing I would say is, um, obviously if, if, you know, some of the costs don't materialize and. Um, we have funds, you know, we have some priority positions, we'd obviously, um, work to fill those. But we, I think, given at this point in time on June, we just felt that was prudent. But please, if anyone else in the school committee wants to, or superintendent want to chime in, please do.
Yeah, I, I think that's right. And I think that from what I understand, and Emily, correct me if I'm wrong, but, um. The, 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 the FTEs, the fourteen point five positions, about half of them were retirements. Um, or non-renewals. And, um, I think also they were sort of str, uh, some of them were strategic in the, in the sense that we tried to create. The least amount of impact to the schools. Um, I, the problem, as Emily mentioned, is that we are forecasting, I don't know, Emily, what do you think is the total amount? Of revenue loss that we're thinking?
So it, it's very hard to predict. I mean, the budget landscape is very uncertain right now because we don't know what's happening with the state budget. We know the state projections are down by something like six billion dollars. Um. Let me just say we're, we are, so, so the, the number that we targeted was around a million dollars. And we're having to make some assumptions there, but we think that that is a, we think that is a realistic number.
We are. Meaning, sorry, meaning that we're, in February, we proposed a budget and now we think we're going to be. A thou, a million dollars below, short of what we thought we would have in February. So I just want to make that clear because I think that's important, right?
Yeah.
That we are, we are now looking at a million dollar, or what we think could be a million dollar deficit. We have an obligation to balance this budget. We, we have to balance the budget, so we have to make decisions. And, um, anyway, I interrupted you. Go ahead, Emily.
No, I just wanted to clarify. So it's, it's a combination of two things. It's, it's anticipated cuts in revenue and, and circuit breaker is our, our significant concern. Circuit breaker reimbursement and increased expenses. So we anticipate having many expenses, significant expenses, that we did not. Build into the budget because they were unforeseen. You know, we weren't, we weren't building a budget for a pandemic. So it's a combination of those two things. And, um. Where we, so I want to say, uh, three things. One, we're very fortunate in Westwood that the town is still proceeding. And putting forward our FY twenty one budget as voted by the committee. So. The cuts that we're making are premised on still getting our FY twenty one budget voted. And that's because the town is going to do stabilization funds to fill a chapter seventy gap. I, I just want to emphasize how fortunate that is because I am speaking with colleagues in many districts where they're being told. Cut a million dollars, cut two million dollars off of that number that they had proposed. In addition, that's a whole other, you know, scale of problem to be dealing with. What we're dealing with is the offset, so our circuit break, our expenses. Um, so, you know. It's a very difficult time and we're relatively in pretty good shape. Clearly for me and for the other, um. You know, administrators in the district, we never want to be cutting. I mean, it's, it's painful to make those choices. We've tried to be as strategic as possible, and I talked quite about it, a bit about it last month, but we first developed a set of guiding principles. And then we said, how can we go about making these choices according to those guiding principles? So as Tony said, mental health, we said, we've got to keep all of those supports in place for next year. Um, and so we've tried to be strategic and we looked closely at impact. The other piece of good news for Westwood, frankly, is that, um, though these, these, it's hard to make these cuts. We are a community that invests in education and we're well resourced to begin with. And so we're able to make some cuts and kind of distribute the cuts in a way that there will be impact. Um. But I think it's going to be all right. So the class sizes will go up at the high school. That is the impact of cutting positions. But we've tried to, um. We've tried to take the cut across different departments and then within our master schedule, we're thinking carefully about where to reduce sections. So I don't think there will be any one kid who goes class to class to class with big class sizes. It means that in a seven period day, they might have one class that is twenty seven, twenty eight. And even as I look at, at how class sizes will be impacted, I think the vast majority of the, the classes in the district. Will still be within the school committee's class size guideline. So, um, we tried to be really. Vigilious about, um, where we took the cuts. Would we prefer not to be doing it? Of course. I mean, I think we can all acknowledge that the situation in the world right now is, to say the least, not ideal. Um, that is. That is the reality where we are, so.
Right. And to Tony's point, um, if our assumptions are incorrect. And we actually don't, and, you know, we have more room in the budget, then we will revisit these decisions, right?
We can certainly revisit it in August and, um, I mean, that would be dependent on maybe having, um, more information. About the state budget. I have to be honest, we're hearing, the state budget isn't going to be done. Anytime soon. And so I don't know how much more information we would have in August. And it would have to somehow turn out to be good news. Um, I don't believe that we will have sufficient information about circuit breaker by August. I just want to be realistic about that. I don't want to create false hope. Um, and the thing about school is that when you're talking about staff. Most of the positions in the district you really need in place at the beginning. Because you're planning your whole model around that. That's not true of everything. So for example, we, um. We have, I think in total, two point five instructional assistant positions. Those we could hire mid-year. So if we got better information. You know, that we could change. Um, but it, you know, it's hard to change a classroom teacher position in this ring.
And it goes without saying, you don't want to do the inverse, it'd be in December and cutting teachers. I mean.
Yes, well, thank you for making that point. I mean, that, that is part of our thinking too. I mean, you know, the, I, I think the worst possible scenario is that we don't make the necessary cuts. And then we end up in a situation where we can't afford to sustain our staff during the year. That would be. Um, really terrible.
Right. We don't know if things are going to get, hate to say it, even worse. Particularly when we all come indoors and we have to be ready for that.
Yeah. And I will say, a, a, and we're very fortunate that the town is able to, that, that there is a stabilization fund, number one. And, um, and that we're able to apply it in this moment. I think we have to be realistic that the budget picture for FY twenty two. Is also looking somewhat gloomy and, um, so we, we are also going to need to, um, rely on stabilization funding. To build the FY twenty two budget. And so we have to be, you know, pragmatic and careful about how much of that money is spent right now. When I think that we have to be forward thinking and, um. You know. Think about FY twenty two, I certainly don't want to be cutting more.
I was gonna, that, um, we're absolutely, um, we need to prioritize working, you know, having a balanced budget within the allocation that we're given by the town. And some of the things that we were pretty confident about are the PPE needs. Those, you know, no matter what model, we're going to have those needs next year. Um, we also will have cleaning needs and that might drive custodial time costs, it might drive other costs. Um, so no, so no matter what, there are costs that previously were not budgeted for because we didn't anticipate them when we were designing the budget for FY twenty one. And, and those are things that even, you know, between now and when we have the state guidance, that. All right, you know, these costs are there to stay.
There are, there are districts right now that are pink slipping all of their non-PTS teachers. And, you know, hoping to bring some back in August, but it, but it's that level of budget uncertainty. That is, you know, concerning districts. And so I, I just put that out there to provide a frame of reference. The fact that we're able to reach into stabilization, you know, make some strategic choices is, um. Isn't as terrible a place to be as, as it could be.
And Emily, for the viewing public, would you just explain what the pink slipping?
The PTS.
Yeah, sorry. I, I veered into lingo there. Um, so basically for, for teachers who do not have professional teacher status, what used to be called tenure. They're on annual contracts and up until June fifteenth. Districts still are able to say, we can't, we don't think we have a contract, we're not going to offer you a contract for next year. And, um, so, you know, for instance, I saw in the media that Brookline issued non-renewal letters, pink slips. To, I think, three hundred educators is what I, what I saw. Um, I was speaking to a principal in another area district today. She told me, yes, I had to, I had to inform all of my non-professional status teachers. And that's not the teachers. In her case, it was an elementary school nurse. And they're informing them that they don't have a contract for them next year because the budget situation is so uncertain. And that's, you know, the unfortunate reality where we are in the economy right now.
Okay, good. Well, thanks for that update. And thank you, thank you for, I think I've got one more question, but I do appreciate, it's great to see all the questions today. And I appreciate, do you believe, please continue to engage with us. Um, final question is on a bit of a different note. Um. And this, we've gotten this question, I know a lot in the past, it's from Ellen Rowlings, eighty six Green Hill Road. The question is, I'm curious, what would be needed to extend the Metco program to the elementary schools? Is this something we could explore? Second question. Um, if this is an option, is this an option or does the program only begin at the middle school statewide?
So it is an option. The program begins in kindergarten. And, um, I would say we're in a minority of Metco districts that we don't start until middle school. Um, so certainly that's something that we could look at and, um, it could be very interesting to look at it. What, what would it take? I mean, it takes having, um. I mean, it takes having room in, in elementary class sizes, and so there's potentially a financial impact there. Um. And it just takes, I would say, community will to say, let's make this a priority if we want to make it a priority.
Okay, thank you. All right, well, good. Well, again, thanks. I'm going to close. John, can you close the public participation? Thank you again, uh, for all your engagement and, you know, feel free, obviously, to follow up with other questions. Okay, all right. So I think the next thing is the superintendent's evaluation. Let me, just give me a second. Um, all right, so, um, since a few things, this is the annual, um, superintendent evaluation that we're doing. Uh, just, I got input from members of the school committee, uh, but let me just preface this with a few thoughts. Um, first, you know, this was Superintendent Park's third year superintendent. I think it goes without saying, she would say this was probably her most eventful. Uh, year. Um, but given that, I asked her, you know, there's a rubric, as we all know, on the school committee. Um, a pretty complicated rubric around the evaluation. We'll submit that, um, for the record. Um, kind of a, of something formal. But I, what I asked the superintendent this year to do is really focus her, her self-evaluation, this conversation from the committee's input will be really focused on. Her four professional goals. her four professional goals, as well as just some thoughts on the post-COVID world over since the last three or four months. So as context, superintendent had four goals this year. The first one was really around continuing to engage the school community in developing a vision focused on student preparation for college and readiness, civic engagement, community contributions and improvement strategy. So I think as we gathered the feedback, you know, I think the school committee all continued to see continued growth in the superintendent's professional development in several ways. I think we'd especially like to commend her for her investment this year in really building a lot of relationships with other superintendents. I can say the number of times I would have a conversation with her, particularly in the post-COVID world, and she could quickly get on her text chain and find out what the twenty neighboring districts were doing. I think that was a really, I mean, that was invaluable. And I think we would just continue to, you know, to tell, especially I think in this next twelve months, continue to, you know, leverage those relationships. So I think it's very helpful. I mean, obviously there's the state guidelines, but it's very helpful to understand what peer schools are doing. And then finally, I think the other thought on this, I mean, there's, I'm just going to go over the highlights because you could, we could go on and, but the other highlight, I think we'd like to comment on this first goal. It's just really encouraging you, and I know you reflect on this in your self-evaluation, continuing to build on your strength and strategy and long-term planning, just encouraging you to find the time in the midst of, amidst the world to kind of continue to think about pushing forward the long-term strategy. We really, we've always, it's always been a strength of yours. And I know it's probably hard, but we would just really want, anything we can do to support that, we would of course, support you on that. So that's the first goal. The second goal was student learning was around developing and implementing a district-wide plan for meeting students' social and emotional learning needs. So SEL. So I think, you know, as we all know, this has been an ongoing, I think, goal of the superintendent as well as the district. I'd like to, again, we commend her on the progress made this year. I think a few highlights. One was particularly some of the efforts of the SEL coach, the K through eight. I think that was a huge addition that really already started to pay dividends through professional development. I know there were thirty teachers that went through a new program called responsive classroom to really help them to bring it to the classroom. And also I think a lot of the efforts, I know advisory has been an ongoing work in progress and I think continues to be a work in progress, but I know some of the efforts there. I think particularly paid dividends as we think about that age group and what they've been dealing with. I mean, all age groups, but I think that age group in particular, as I think about reintegrating and we'd encourage that continued support. The other piece, I think particularly that we've heard a lot of feedback from the community to just commend, again, the superintendent and the team on was around some of the parent forums. There were a number of parent forums that continue to get rave reviews. Also like to thank the pivot that went on and to thank our friends and youth and family services for partnering with us over the last few months to pivot, to have some programs that kind of helped deal with some of the new challenges. And again, this is, I know it's takes, takes some work. This is one of these things I think has huge benefit for the community and parents. So again, commend for that piece as well. And there's, I know a lot of other, and I think this is also, as I think about, as we thought about as committee, the SEL, I mean, I think this is an era we've invested in over the last several years, but I think it's well invested now as we, it's always a good investment, but I think we've now, we're going to pay the dividends as we have a lot of the staffing to help again, help children through this unusual time. So the, the third and fourth goals I'm going to kind of talk about together. The superintendent had two goals, one more around engaging the community in the building project. The other one was around continuing to push forward the MSBA requirements. So I think those were grouped together. So I think the thoughts here as a committee we had is, I mean, first, you know, the superintendent invested a lot of time and really in, in all this project, participating in the school building committee, multiple subcommittees, participating in bi-weekly working group meetings, facilitating communication with the town manager and multiple stakeholders. As one school committee member said, frankly, we're not sure how you quite did it, especially with everything going on with COVID. But I think it was really remarkable process. I mean, I think the particular things we'd like to commend was a lot around the community engagement, which I think really was, I mean, I really have done really well, I think, across the board from engaging with PTOs to seniors to obviously there was, I can't remember how many forums there were, I think seven or eight. I think there were over, if you count all the people that collectively attended those forums, I mean, they were, there were some people attending all of them. There was, I think it was like five hundred plus people attended all those forums, which our architects said was, they had never seen anything like this. So I think it gets to a bit of the community, how community engages in this, but I also think the forums, the outreach was actually, I mean, it was, I can't say, I think it was amazing. And I think the forum we had last week where, you know, people really, we had fifty or sixty people, had a few questions, but really a lot of positive input on the finer recommended option. I think that's a tribute to all the work, both in the forums and also on the evaluation criteria and all the process that we went through, I think really has paid off. And that people are, have a project that we really understand how we got to. And I think that was, again, a phenomenal, I think, although our process, it was phenomenal engagement. So we'd like to thank you for that as well. We know there's still some work to do in the next ten months or eleven months, leading up to the the need for funding. But we, I think we all have strong, you know, I think the process we've gone under, if we continue that, we'd like to just ask everybody to continue that. So that is, that, that's kind of the goals. And then on, when I just kind of, so I call that section BC before COVID. I would say the, the next, I just have some more overall thoughts. I mean, we could talk a lot about the last few months. But I think, you know, first of all, I think we'd just like to thank you and your team. I mean, I think we talked about earlier just for your leadership during these times and your team being, people on this call as well as beyond. I think a few highlights that, and this is not exhaustive, a few highlights, we'd like to just commend superintendent and her team on. I think overall, the communication continued. I think, and we talked about in the forum, I think communications continues to be a strength. People, you know, they understand what's going on, they feel communicated to. A second thing, and I think this is, gets to a little bit around the relationships building that you've done with other superintendents, but also the relationship you continue to build with the, the teacher association. It really helped us to remain focused on what really is in the best interest of the students as well as doable by teachers. The third thing, just to commend again, I think I talked a little bit about the SEL. I think the investment we've made over the years in technology is really, again, the long-term thinking that we did on that has really paid off this year as we were able to, not perfectly, but able to kind of go into a virtual environment in a fairly easy way. And then finally, you know, this doesn't probably get to talk too much. I think the thing, other piece I'd want to just highlight is really special education. You know, I think, I know it's always, it's been a challenging year for everyone, especially special ed. But I think what I've heard is that compared to a lot of other neighboring districts, what we were able to do was, you know, really remarkable. So I'd like to just highlight again to the team, that was, I think, a great example of leadership to make sure that we can continue to help some of the special ed and also just getting the work being done on getting the ESY programming off the ground. Again, this is something I know a lot of districts have said they're not going to attempt, but I think the fact that we talked about earlier, again, we'd like to commend you for that. And I think it's again, critical. You've talked, so finally, I'll just have a few thoughts. So my first thought goes back to when the superintendent called me the morning of March twelfth to discuss the closing of the schools. To me, I remember I was right over here in the living room. And this was just as context, if you remember before the governor had ordered the schools closed. I think in that highlighted a lot of the strengths of superintendent. In literally a few minutes, she laid out, you know, the case why it should be done, putting the children's health first. She was calm, reasoned, and had data to back it up. And she was firm in her belief and recommendations. And that to me kind of sums up, I guess, at least the year, as I've worked closely with you as chair, but it really, to me, sums up a lot of the strengths that I'd ask you to continue going forward. The second piece is, you know, I just want to again, highlight that while this evaluation is by the school committee for the superintendent, it also really reflects the entire team. And I just want you to communicate that to your team. The team being the administrators, teams and staff. We appreciate everyone's efforts this year. I know it's been a challenging three months. And just echoing the comments you had earlier, please encourage all your teams, teachers, staff, particularly the ones working around, you know, full year round to take a little bit of time here before we ramp up again in July to reconnect with friends and family. And finally, the superintendent, you commented in your self-evaluation, the last three months have without a doubt been the most challenging period of your twenty-five years in education. I'm sure many of us and the family members and people in the community would echo your feelings about our lives as well. So on behalf of the Westwood School Committee, we'd like to thank you and the entire team, staff, faculty, because we believe, looking back, we will echo Churchill's words and say, this was your finest hour. So thank you for the year and on to next year.
Thank you very much.
Before, before Emily says anything, that was a tremendous summary of, of how we all feel. And we appreciate the work that you put into that. I wonder if I, if I can just echo some of your sentiments, if I can take a minute, do you mind?
Of course.
So Emily, this is directly directed to, toward you and your administration. And I think we've said this over and over, but it can't be said enough. This has been an unprecedented year with challenges the likes of which none of us have ever seen. And during this time, you and your administration have demonstrated unparalleled commitment to our school district. In short, I think this team went, continues to go over and above the call of duty, especially in the times that we're in. As, as Tony mentioned, the building project alone, it, it's a job of, in and of itself, and we recognize that. In addition to your regular responsibilities as a superintendent, you and your team really created a ground swell to inform and educate the community about the building project and to encourage community involvement, which was so important at this time. And did not go unnoticed, twenty-one building committee meetings this year, plus bi-weekly working groups, site visits inside and out of the district, six public forums and more. And for all of these meetings which occur literally morning, noon and night, Emily, you were incredibly prepared, composed, professional, informative, and your speaking and writing abilities are unmatched. And then with no warning, we get this pandemic. And unlike other businesses, we can't stop serving our customers. With little guidance and only darkness ahead at the head of, at the helm of this ship, you led through a volatile and uncertain time and you continue to do so. I think it's an, I'm blown away by the amount of, of work that continues to go into ensuring that our kids can get the best possible education in these volatile and uncertain times. And that, and addressing budget concerns and continuing to look forward to September with really not much, not much to know ahead, dark, just darkness and uncertain times. My hat, really, my hat is off to all of you. I'm blown, again, I know this sounds dramatic, but it's so incredibly true. And the last point I will make, and then I will turn over is, in addition to the challenges and long hours and the fact that you guys operate like a well-oiled machine. And we all know that the challenges, headaches and long hours are going to continue with no end in sight. At least that's the way it feels. I can't commend you enough for you and your leadership team giving back your contractual salary increases to preserve the ELS specialist position. That action in and of itself really speaks volumes. So thank you for, to you and your team for all of your work. I had to say that. Shut up now.
That was very well said. And I don't really, I don't know what to say. I just don't. I honestly don't. I don't know how we could do this building project without you. I don't think we could, quite frankly. And, and your team and just the leadership and the friendship and the, the calm that you lead, with, with which you lead is, is really, it makes our job so much easier and it makes, it just calms everyone else around. Like I just, I just, I just, you know, you're sort of like this, this very, this thing, you know, that sort of spreads this, I can't even say it, this feeling of, you know, serenity and this crazy, crazy time and your communication style, the clarity with which you speak, the way you, you educate us each time you open your mouth. I just think it's, I just thank you for, for everything. I really can't say enough. I'm, I'm clearly speechless.
And I just want to say that it's been a wonderful experience to work with you and to end my school committee experience with, with you, Emily. I've really enjoyed it. And I know you're going to be, continue to be extremely successful. The town is so fortunate to have you. So thank you very, very much.
Oh, well, thank you. And thank you, Giuseppe. You chaired the search process that hired me. So confidence in me is much appreciated.
Great thing that we did.
So thank you so much. I mean, it's like, it's almost embarrassing. So thank you, thank you so much. I really, I, I just want to say that I really do appreciate the support of the committee. And I, I know how lucky we are to have, you know, a highly functioning, thoughtful school committee and who supports the work of the district. And I really appreciate that. And I would just underscore everything you've said about the team. The team that I work with in this district is absolutely incredible. You know, if, if, if things are going well in special education, I will point to Abby Hanscom. That is absolutely about her leadership and it just, just everyone. So thank you so much. And I will just say, Maia, that if I appear serene, I am flaking it. That's for sure.
You are doing a really good job.
I appreciate that. Thank you so much. And there's been so much to learn about leadership in the last three months. And I said to somebody the other day, it's just that we're so in it right now that I, I'm not sure what, I'm not sure what the lessons learned are yet. But at some point, we'll be able to reflect on this period of time. And I, I think there's going to be a lot, a lot to learn about teaching and learning, actually, as we go forward. So thank you so much.
Okay, great. Good. So why don't we move on to the action items? We've got, still want to do this chair, probably get through pretty quickly. So the next first one is the approval of the superintendent's proposed changes to the FY twenty one budget, which the document's in there, we talked about it last time. Is there a motion to approve those proposed changes?
I'll make a motion.
Can I just make, I just want to make sure we're clear on what, what we're voting on. So we've done tier one and tier two. And then there was tier three, but that was the ELA specialist and the admin assistant. And I believe that we agreed only tier one and tier two, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
And clarify that. Okay.
I did make the motion, but I was totally muted. So.
I think there was a second there. So let me do roll call. It'd be Giuseppe Jowdy.
Yes.
Carol Lewis.
Yes.
Maia Pocken.
Yes.
Anthony Mollon, yes. Charlie Donahue's not here. Okay, great. The next one is the approval of the fiscal year two thousand twenty-one non-bargaining salaries. And there's actually two other ones connected, I think, to contracts. I don't know if you want to say anything about these before we vote.
So the, so we're recommending no increase for our non-bargaining folks. And I will say, so the other two are two bargaining units that when we were up for negotiation this year, our instructional assistants and our food services folks. And I just want to thank them very much because both of those groups of people recognize the very difficult budget situation that we're in. And they have both agreed to, we've, we've worked out a one-year contract with both of those units with no COLA increase. And so we very much appreciate their sacrifice right now as well. And both of the groups have ratified at this point, correct? Yeah, great.
Great. Thank you. Thank you to them for their cooperation. All right. So the first motion to approve of the fiscal year two thousand twenty-one non-bargaining salaries pay rates.
Make that motion.
Second. All right, roll call. Giuseppe Jowdy.
Yes.
Carol Lewis.
Yes.
Maia Pocken.
Yes.
Anthony Mollon, yes. And Mr. Donahue's not here. Next is vote to ratify instructional assistants contract. Do I have a motion to ratify that?
So moved. Second.
Great. Roll call.
Yes.
Giuseppe Jowdy. Maia Pocken.
Yes.
And Anthony Mollon, yes. Great. And next one, the final one on the, the contract says vote to ratify food services employees contract.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
All right, roll call. Giuseppe Jowdy.
Yes.
Carol Lewis.
Yes.
Maia Pocken.
Yes.
Anthony Mollon. Yes. The next one, I think, Maia Pocken, the school building committee chair will make the next four motions.
Yes. So the first motion is for enrollment. I move to support the Hanlon Deerfield project option that has an enrollment of five hundred and sixty students for the Hanlon MSBA project.
Do I have a second?
Go ahead, Tony.
A second, I'll second, sure. All right, roll call. Giuseppe Jowdy. I can second it.
No, you have the chair. You can't second, but that's all right. Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
Mia Plotkin.
Yes.
Anthony Mullen, yes. All right, here it is. Next one.
All right, the second one's for redistricting. I move to support the consolidation of the Hanlon School and the Deerfield School into one school at the current Hanlon site by merging the current Hanlon and Deerfield school districts in the event that the Hanlon Deerfield project with an enrollment of 560 students receives all of the necessary approvals and is expected to be completed.
Second.
All right, roll call. Giuseppe Jowdy. Carol Lewis.
Yes.
Mia Plotkin.
Yes.
Anthony Mullen, yes. Carries four zero. Next, Sheen.
Yep, the Sheen design study. I move to specify that the design funds in the amount not to exceed $30,000 previously authorized by the school committee to study the elementary school or schools that are not a part of the MSBA final project be designated to study the Sheen school in the event that the Hanlon Deerfield project with an enrollment of 560 students receives the approval vote of the school building committee.
Do I have a second? All right, roll call. Giuseppe Jowdy.
Yes.
Carol Lewis.
Yes.
Mia Plotkin.
Yes.
Anthony Mullen, yes. So carries four to zero.
And the last vote is the Deerfield vote. I move to revert control of the Deerfield School back to the town of Westwood in the event that the Hanlon Deerfield project with an enrollment of 560 students receives all of the necessary approvals and is expected to be completed. And at the time that the school district determines that the Deerfield School is no longer needed for district purposes, such purposes to include but not be limited to swing space in the event of a Sheen school building project or other purposes to fulfill the educational programs of the Westwood Public Schools.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call. Giuseppe Jowdy.
Yes.
Carol Lewis.
Yes.
Mia Plotkin.
Yes.
Anthony Mullen, yes. Carries four to zero. All right. So then two final things. The next one, we talked about last time, the school committee calendar. I believe there's been a few dates put in place for the summer plus the other ones. So the next one is approval of the 2020-21 school committee meeting calendar.
So moved.
So moved. Roll call. Giuseppe Jowdy.
I am voting for Amanda Phillips. She says the dates are fine. So. What happened?
I think he froze.
Tony's not there anymore. He left.
It's a great frozen picture of him though.
It is perfect. He's very cheerful.
Happens now, does the vice chair step in?
Yes.
Okay. So I have a roll call, right?
Yes.
Right. So Carol Lewis.
Yes.
Mia Plotkin.
Yes.
Tony Mullen. I can't believe this.
Well, it's three.
Majority.
Motion passes. So. I've been waiting all year.
The great way to end, Giuseppe.
Exactly.
Is that Tony's back?
I think he, he would left. I think he's going to try and come back in.
Going to come back in.
You want to wait?
Wait one minute.
Yeah.
That, that was a great job, Giuseppe.
I think he did it on purpose. I, I think he did it on purpose to give you a final bow. Just to have one last.
One last, my moment of power, right?
Yes.
Where is it?
I don't know. Should we just go ahead? Just go ahead.
Okay. Final is the approval of the May 20th meeting minutes. So can I have a motion? Motion to approve.
Second.
Do we have any discussion or amendments?
No.
Okay, all of, uh, let's see, all the roles. Mia Plotkin.
Yes.
Out of all the Carol Lewis.
Yes.
Giuseppe Jowdy, yes. So can I have a call for adjournment?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor? Oh, no, sorry. Okay, roll call. Carol Lewis.
Yes.
Mia Plotkin.
Yes.
Giuseppe Jowdy, yes. We're adjourned. Thank you all.